Anyway, I will call this work session of the Troutdale City Council to order Tuesday, April 1st. Let's have a roll call.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Davidson.
Here.
Counselor Lamy.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor One.
Present.
Counselor Andrews.
Here.
Mayor Rittman.
Here.
All right.
There's public comment on the agenda, and I will invite public comment at this time. This is a public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comment should be directed at the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of council. Council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. Do we have anyone out there on Zoom?
There's nobody out there.
All right, and there doesn't seem to be anybody in the council chambers, so...
Paul's on there, should you all just check him?
So we'll move on to item 3.1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming out on this additional meeting night. The first circled date that I had given you on the calendars, this special work session for April 1st. As you received the staff report and all of the materials, I hope you've had the opportunity to take a look through them. I'm going to turn it over to Eric Jensen, the principal from Jensen Strategies, which I believe all of you have met, but you see now that he doesn't live inside that little box on your screen, but he's actually here, live and in person, and he's going to walk through the materials that they have developed as part of the recruitment process that the council engaged them for. And then a week from tonight, we'll take whatever the finalized versions are of this material, and I'll be back before you with a resolution for you to formally adopt them so that it will allow for your executive session interviews later on in the process. So with that, I will stop talking and turn it over to you, sir.
Oh, thank you, Eric, and evening, Mayor, council. It's a pleasure to be out here in Troutdale this evening. I want to, first of all, thank you all for giving us the opportunity to help you with the recruitment of your next city manager. And we are already off and running in terms of getting this process moving, and tonight is one of the key milestones along the way. So what we're here tonight to talk about are two specific documents that were in your packet. One was a position profile, is a position profile, and the other is a set of hiring procedures. You need to adopt these formally as the city council if you want to hold executive sessions moving forward to talk about candidates, talk about the recruitment process. So this is an important piece of the equation so that we can move forward effectively in this recruitment. The other reason that we're here this evening is we have also done a little bit of research with regard to salary. We have some comparative numbers to share with you, and our recommendation, and we'll do that after we get through talking about the position profile and the hiring procedures. The position profile itself also plays another role for us. We use that document as the bellwether for looking at candidates, for rating and ranking candidates, all the way through the process, from the time the applications come in the door, to the semifinalist interviews, to the finalist interviews. This document is what we will base the criteria on going forward because this is what you have told us that you would like to see in the next, in the next city manager. The position profile was developed through the interviews that we did with all of you and your, your executive team, as well as from community members who participated in a meeting or did a survey, and as well as city staff who answered an online survey as well. So we took all that information and put it together and summarized it, and hopefully this kind of captures what, what you're looking for. You will find as we go through this that, as you read it, you're going to say, "Well, this is asking for a unicorn." And I want to be very clear here, we're looking at putting together something that is your ideal candidate. The chances of us finding somebody who's going to check every box or check every box at a 10 out of, or 10 out of 1 to 10, I haven't seen that happen yet. I wish I had. But at the same time, as I said, it will give us the criteria that we need to be able to move forward. So what you have in your packet, starting on page six of your packet, there's the adoption cover sheet just explaining why, why you're going through this process and the public meeting law that you're satisfying. But starting on pages, from pages seven to 12 is the position profile, and then you have the hiring procedures on 13 to 16. And Eric has also included in there the calendar that he just held up a moment ago, the city version of the calendar. And then there is also the city's official position description for the city manager position. So let me take you first to the position profile, and I'll walk you through it, and I'm going to just share with you first, and I'm assuming everybody's read every word of that position profile, and I won't have to go into great detail, but, but the way it's organized is you have your required minimum qualifications. What are the bare minimum qualifications that the candidates need to have before we look at their application further? And then you have the preferred education experience, and that is, "But it would be really nice if they had this degree or they had this experience." Following that, there's the section on desired skills and attributes, and that is the list of the attributes that we pulled out of the information that we received from everyone. And then there is also a section, starting on page 10 of your packet, on policy directives. And these are the policy directives that the next city manager would be expected to take a role in moving forward, and we'll come back to that. So let me just start with the required minimum education and experience. We put down a bachelor's degree and at least three years of upper-level local government management experience. This is probably the, the minimum that we would ever put in a minimum, in minimum qualifications. We did hear from the council, as well as others, that you want to have a certain degree of latitude in terms of looking at candidates. And so we were trying very hard not to be too prescriptive on the, on the minimum qualifications. So you will see the language that says, "An equivalent combination of education experience may be considered." And so if there are candidates that maybe for one reason or another don't quite hit these minimum requirements, but there's other extenuating circumstances, that's an opportunity to bring them into the pool if, if everything else makes sense. On the preferred education, we put down an advanced degree, usually that's a master's in public administration, or it could be a related field. And then five years of increasingly responsible experience. And then we also list the, the topic areas that we, we're hoping that the candidates will have some experience or familiarity with, including intergovernmental relations, public safety, and economic development, and as sort of a sub to economic development, familiarity with urban renewal. Any questions about the minimum qualifications or the preferred qualifications before I move on to the attributes? All right. Now, the attributes, we tend to list in priority order as we heard them in the interviews and the surveys going forward, with the exception of the first two attributes, that being leadership and management and council relations. We see those attributes as core to any city manager position. They need to be able to manage an organization as a COO, and they need to be able to work closely with the governing body and who they report to. So with regard to leadership and management, we talked about managing a multifaceted city. The thing about cities is that you have multiple disciplines. You're looking at law enforcement, you're looking at public infrastructure, public works, you're looking at public finance, you're looking at a number of different types of disciplines in the organization, and being able to manage those types, that diversity, if you will, is important. We mentioned quality, delivery of services, organizational vision and culture. We heard this from, from folks that you would like somebody who can give that vision to the organization of, you know, where are we going with this? Where are we going with, with, with the city? And also managing with a limited staff capacity. You do have limited staff, and so they need to be able to be, in part, a working manager, not necessarily just someone who's sitting back and saying, "You're going to do this, you're going to do that." And then a leadership style that has a number of, a number of attributes there, from communication, teamwork professionalism, empathy, candor, respect, inclusivity, integrity, which I think you'd want to make most positions that you'd be hiring for. But you'll notice we also put in experience managing outsourced core services is desired. We did hear from you that that is not a deal killer if they haven't managed outsourced core services, but if it, if they have done that, that's helpful. So on the council relations front, one of the things that we heard from council members and some others, but primarily from the council, is that you want somebody, A, that is going to be keeping you informed, that's going to be keeping you informed on a regular basis, but also keeping you informed individually, so that they've built a relate, a working relationship with you that is conducive to good communication between you and the city manager. The other thing that we heard from you is you want someone who is going to be candid with you, who's going to be proactive of bringing issues to the council and saying, "These are things you might want to think about, or you might not want to go down this path because you might have this consequence." And we heard that from a number of you, so that's in there, as well as just being able to work with a variety of different viewpoints, a variety of different positions, and helping to bring consensus, to be a facilitator in bringing consensus to, to the group. And then being able to take council policy and translate that into operations on the ground, what, getting staff to, to implement the policies that you've put together. So public safety is the next one on, and this one was probably number one when I was, we were talking with everybody, just, it is a big issue here from a variety of standpoints. And so somebody who has experience with public safety agencies, public safety departments is something that you would very much like to see is what we heard. And as part of that, inasmuch as you're continuing to outsource those two core services to other agencies, somebody who has experience in intergovernmental agreements is going to be very helpful in that regard, and someone who can hold those entities accountable. And also looking at public safety from the standpoint of, are they meeting community needs going forward? And again, inasmuch as they're working with outside agencies on public safety, being able to advocate for the city effectively and to work effectively in negotiating agreements. Economic development, urban renewal was very close second, if you will, in terms of key issues for you folks, and what we heard is you want somebody who's going to possess the, the experience in redevelopment in the community, that has experience in urban renewal or something similar, because outside the state, they, they may call it something different, or you use different approaches to redevelopment, and that they have familiarity with utilizing incentives to be able to attract new businesses to the city. And looking at economic development from a long-term strategy perspective, that they're thinking about, okay, where are we going as opposed to a one-off each time? You also, in the same, in the same category here, if you will, economic development, you really wanted to have someone who understood business, that understand, has familiarity with the business community, and knows how to collaborate with the private sector, and that someone who, as, as you're moving forward with your economic development, is at the same time looking to preserve the quality of life in this community and looking to preserve the historic downtown going forward. And then the last piece on this is branding. We heard a lot about, there is a need here to really start focusing more on branding and marketing with the city, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Intergovernmental relations was also really important, just, number one, as I mentioned before, with regard to the core services that you outsource, but also because you're dealing with metro and you're dealing with the state, and having someone who is savvy about working with other jurisdictions is going to be paramount in this, in this government, in this municipality. So you want somebody who's going to be able to, again, advocate for the city, represent the city well, collaborate whenever possible, but look out for the interests of Troutdale. On the communication side, you want somebody who's going to be highly visible in the community. You're also looking for somebody who's going to be able to message the city's priorities and actions to, with the community, and be able to communicate with diverse audiences across, across the community. And that includes everybody from, from city council to the staff, to local government officials, community members, nonprofits, businesses, other stakeholders. And somebody who has a, a strong EQ, emotional intelligence, and cultural competencies, something that you're also looking for in this person. And that somebody who can also translate complex issues to, to the community, to the different audiences, and be able to facilitate discussions around them. Moving on to community engagement, we heard that you wanted to, somebody who was proactive about doing community engagement and bringing the community into citizen, sorry, city decisions and, and discussions, and having outreach strategies that are sustainable over time, but stay within the capacity of staff and the resources that, that you have available to you. I'm going to move on to public finance. A public finance fell a little lower on the list, not because it's not important, it's very important to you, but I'm sitting next to a person that many people talk about globally with regard to how strong of a finance director that you have, and that whoever's coming in is going to be able to rely heavily on Eric. And so that, that wasn't seen as an immediate, geez, we really need somebody to come in with strong public finance because you've got the resource, you've got the resource here. That said, we also heard that you are looking for a city manager who is going to look at public finance from a longer-term perspective, and being able to find sustainable revenue sources that are available to you. You did mention, or we did hear, that you would like to have somebody who's familiar with Oregon budget law. That would be helpful, but not a deal killer. Moving on to public works, somebody who is familiar with public works, again, you've got good public work staff available, but you want somebody who's familiar with public infrastructure projects, and sewer, and roads, and, and water. And that they're the type of person that's going to provide the leadership support for those types of projects to move forward, and that infrastructure to be kept up. And this goes back to the intergovernmental piece, being able to, because you have county roads going through here, being able to work with other jurisdictions on road issues from an intergovernmental standpoint. Now, you can see how intergovernmental skills rose so quickly up to the top of the list. And then human resources, somebody who understands human resources planning and management and has experience in that, and has the ability to plan for the workforce for the city, keeping it an effective workforce for the city going forward long-term, including being able to do succession planning for the city as well. Next one, appreciation for Troutdale. You want to make sure that, that they have an appreciation for what, where Troutdale is, and what Troutdale is. The fact that, that you are positioned in East County, you want folks to understand, do you know what that means to be in East Mualmane County? What is that perspective? And do they understand the potential for this community? That you are in this juxtaposition of being right at the gateway to the gorge, and that there are a lot, there's a lot of potential and a lot of opportunity that comes with that. So an appreciation for understanding that dynamic. The last one is one we put in all of our recruitments, which is an understanding of city government roles. Do they understand this, the council manager form of government? That's going to be imperative for them to understand that. All right, so that's the attributes. Before I move on, any questions about the attributes? Did we capture that?
I just wanted to say I appreciate the emphasis that was given based on feedback about the, I guess, skills in negotiation, working with many different outside parties and counties and the like to accomplish the needs and protect what, you know, we're about and our needs. I think the last, I mean, just going ahead a little bit, I think like the last sentence that you gave on the discussion for strategic community building and stuff, that was pretty long, too, but I, I agree with that.
Great. So it sounds like we pretty much captured it. Great. Okay. All right, I'm going to move on to the last section on the position profile, and this, these are the policy directives. And we heard two definitive policy directives, and then there was another one that we, we heard that, that was a little more amorphous in, in the way that we heard it, but once we heard everybody's voice, it sort of gelled for us. So the first one, of course, is public safety. And whoever's coming in is going to be having to take on the, the next iteration, if you will, of the discussion around public safety and where that's going to go. It's anticipated that the contract negotiations will have been completed by the time this person comes on board, but the issue is still very much there, and is very prominent in everybody's mind, they, to move forward. So having somebody who can come in and look at, what does that next step look like for public safety in Troutdale, whether you're talking about a fire district, or whether you're talking about your own police department, but they're going to be needing to deal with that. The second is urban renewal with the confluence, and someone who's going to be able to navigate moving that process forward in terms of, once the developer is elected, and being able to, to help gel that vision and bring the resources to bear, and the different elements that go into that, which are, as I'm sure you know, very complicated. So looking for someone who, who has the ability to do that, to bring that vision to life. And then the last one that I talked about, which was, I said, was a little amorphous when we were talking to everybody, and it's kind of gelled for us when we put it together, is variations of this concept that we heard, which is, you're really looking for a proactive approach, is what we're hearing, in terms of a, a sense of place of, for Troutdale, from the standpoint of creating the identity for Troutdale that goes beyond the borders of Troutdale. And that's everything from looking at, how do you brand Troutdale? How do you market Troutdale? Not just for attracting businesses, but as a, as a tourist opportunity, given where you are, and juxtaposition to the gorge. And also looking at ways of being able to, to strengthen your core, if you will, that will allow that to happen. And that's where you see, we've written a little bit about city, effectively, city operations, optimizing the usage of city facilities will be of central importance. We learned about how the facility, city facilities are, are in different locations, and we heard some questions about, well, you know, would it be better if, if there was some centralization of facilities? It's a question nobody had an answer to, but the question was, was out there. And so just being able to evaluate the space needs for the city may help to strengthen the city even further. And so that, we're seeing that as something that the next city manager may want to take a look at and explore whether or not that's something worth pursuing or not. But ultimately, you're looking, as we heard, for... But ultimately, you're looking, as we heard, for some, for a vision and a strategic direction that is integrated in a way that you will be able to gain that sort of external appreciation for Troutdale and its character within the Portland metropolitan region and that it plays a unique and integral role in the Portland metropolitan region. So, bringing all of that together takes a strategic thought process and a strategic proactive effort to bring all those pieces together. And so, that's what we heard and that's why this section is in here. With that, any thoughts about the policy directives?
I guess it sounds good.
I guess so. I'll take it. Okay.
This is one of the benefits of hiring an experienced professional recruitment firm. Done this a number of times. They've got a lot of practice in extracting what constituencies or need of, what the felt needs are. So, it's not surprising that you're not finding gaps because they've done this once or twice.
A few times.
Are most cities' desired, listed desired skills and attributes this long?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
In fact, you're not even the longest.
Okay, good.
But like I said, I mean, it looks like, when you read through it, it looks like you're looking for a unicorn. But it gives us some sense of what you're looking for that allows us to use this to set our criteria. So, is the draft as currently written? Does that meet with your approval? I'm not formal approval, but just generally. We don't need to make any changes?
I can't make any changes.
Okay. Great. All right, well, you'll see this come back to you next week and for approval at your formal council or your regular council meeting. The other document I'm going to cover just very briefly because these are the hiring procedures. And you have to lay out the hiring procedures as part of meeting, public meeting law, and if you want to hold executive session on candidates. And so, what you have here is what we have in the proposal. So, you've seen this already. So, I'm not going to dwell on the specifics of this because you've seen it already. We were hired to do this process, but it's capturing it on paper here.
This is consistent with what we presented when you initiated the, commenced the recruitment process and consistent with the meeting where we went through the schedule and the calendar. These are all kind of the steps that they'll be following that you'll have to participate in different judgments.
And I'm, but I am going to call out the next steps and bring those to your attention. So, if you look at page 16 of your packet, which has the recruitment schedule on it, I'm just going to walk through with you and highlight some of the key milestones along the way. And I know Eric has already covered this with you once, but we're going to just cover it with you one more time. So, at the next meeting, you will adopt the formal profile, the hiring procedures, as I've been mentioning. And that's on April 8th. Once you've done that, we are going to draft up a brochure that's based on this profile. We will work with Eric and Ray to review the profile draft, review what our graphic artist puts together. And then we will put that out, we will put that out on the street, so to speak. The advertisement is going to run between April 21st and May 26th. A little over four weeks. We accounted for a little bit more just because of Memorial Day. But generally speaking, we run this for four weeks. That's kind of the sweet spot for having this out on the, out on the market. Once the applications are received in our office, and we do ask, we ask each candidate to fill out, give us three products. One is a cover page, explain why they want the position, why they think they're qualified, their resume, and then we have a form that we have them fill out as well so that we can get apples-to-apples comparisons of the candidates. And we ask them to, for each job, to say how many people have they managed? What size budget have they managed? And when were they, when were they there? But we also ask them a couple of questions. One is whether or not they have had any accusations of misconduct. And if so, please explain that. And the second is if they have left the position involuntarily, to explain that as well. And so, we'll get that out on the table at the outset. So, once the applications are in, we have a team of two people who are going to be reviewing these applications. And I believe you know at least one of the individuals, and that's Eric Kvarsten, who is on our team. Eric is going to be one of the applicant, application reviewers. And then Dave Waffle, I don't know if you know Dave, but he's former city manager of Corneus and has worked for the city of Beaverton, now retired. And so, we use people who have done the job to do the ratings and do the rankings. Following that, we then shortlist up to 10 people that we think best fit the attributes that you're looking for in the position. And we will interview those folks by Zoom. And those 10 people will be interviewed again by Eric and Dave. Again, two people who have had the position and understand the position. And following that, then we come back to you. And we will come back to you in executive session, and we've got that scheduled for June 9th, I believe. And we highly encourage you to be at this council executive session in person because we will walk in with notebooks. And the notebooks will have the applications of all of the people that we've interviewed and as well as anything that we have been able to find on Google about each of the candidates. And we will walk through with you our observations of those 10 or however many people it is that we've interviewed. And once we get through that, we will give you a recommendation regarding those that we feel would be best served to be your finalists moving through the process. But it's ultimately, as always, up to you, whether or not you agree or you would like to have a different candidate or candidates in the mix. So, we will walk through all that with you. We, one of the reasons we'd like to have you here in person is because we don't let those papers out of our sight. We will collect those notebooks as we leave the executive session because these candidates have not, at that point, agreed to go public. And we respect their right to privacy at that stage in the recruitment. So, we will be taking those notebooks with us at the end of the session. Once you have agreed on who you want as finalists, we call those people. And I ask them two questions. The first question is, are you willing to move forward as a finalist? The second question is, are you willing to go public? And you'd be surprised, people sometimes say, oh, I didn't realize I had to go public. But that's why we ask the question. And once we've gotten everybody to agree and say, yes, we're going to move forward, then we'll write up a press release. We give them a couple of days to tell their employers and let people know that they, that they feel they need to know before it goes public. And we draft up a press release and give that to the city to disseminate. And at that point, all those folks have gone public as your finalist candidates. Once that's done, then we start doing further background checks. So, we do a full background check, we do a criminal background check, we do a financial background check, we check for civil litigation on all of, all of the finalists. And then we also do reference checks. We do reference checks on asking them for someone who has been a, who has been a member of a council or other governing body that they have served, someone who has been a subordinate to them, and two other people who can speak to their ability to be city manager. We also do what I call sort of off-the-grid reference checks. We know people, and we make a few phone calls as well to supplement that. At the end of that process, and that takes about two weeks, then we move into the final interviews. And the finalist interviews, the candidates come in person. And we have that scheduled, and I believe you all have that on your schedules. But the interview week will be the week of June 23rd. And we start off on the first day with two receptions. One reception for the city staff to meet and greet the candidates and one reception for the community. We highly recommend that city council attend the community one. So, not as much as participants as to be observers of how these folks interact with your community members. And these receptions are, that's a misnomer because we facilitate those. We divide up the participants into different groups. Depending on the number, if we have four finalists, we'll have four different groups. And we do something akin to speed dating. And we have the candidates rotate between the groups. So, everybody gets an equal chance of being able to talk with them. And we ask people at the end to fill out surveys. Either, we have a QR code that people can download, or we have paper copies as well. So, there's that. And the second day, we offer a tour to the candidates, to the finalists. And my understanding is that Ray has volunteered to do the tour.
I know where the skeletons are buried. I will show them all.
And then in the afternoon, we have three interview panels. The first interview panel is a panel of community leaders that is selected by you folks. I will work with Eric and Ray in terms of who might be on it. But we normally recommend that you pick different interests in the community that are important and then fill the spots with, for those interests. The second one is a public administrator panel, which are other city managers in the area or special district managers in the area or county managers. And they make up the second panel. And then the third panel are your department heads. And so, we run them through those panels. We facilitate all of the panels during that afternoon, and they just kind of go through all of them. And then on the third day, the Wednesday, June 25th, which should be on your calendar, is the day that they interview with you. And we schedule one and a half hour interviews with each, for each candidate and bring them in to interview with the, with all of you. And then the candidates are free to go at that point. The following day, we will facilitate a deliberation session with the council, an executive session. By the way, the interviews are also an executive session, the, for the council. With the deliberation session, I take that in three parts. The first part is I will ask all of you to download your impressions of the candidates from the day before. And we'll go through the pros and cons from your perceptions. The second piece is we will download with you everything that we have learned about the candidates, the background checks, the reference checks. And we will also provide you with a written summary of what came out of the receptions from the surveys and a written summary of what came out of the panels. At that point, then, we facilitate the council's decision-making process. Normally, what we'll do is, once you've come to a conclusion, assuming that you have picked somebody, I will step out of executive session and I will go and call that candidate because I've prepared all the candidates for this phone call and say, are you willing to accept the council's offer pending negotiations? And come back, and if they say yes, and I've only had one case where they didn't, the, they say yes, then you come out of executive session into regular session and do a formal vote at that point. And the vote is pending negotiations, which is key. So, that's the process. Sorry, I was a little long-winded. I get carried away when I talk about this. But do you have any questions about it?
Nice and clear.
All right. Well, thank you very much for bearing with me as I go through that. I wanted you to fully understand what was coming, so. All right, the last piece that I have for you is with regard to salary. We were asked to do a salary, a salary study. And so, what you have in front of you, we selected 10 cities that have characteristics, one way or another, related to Troutdale, either in terms of their size, being in the metropolitan area, or being adjacent to you. So, you see Wood Village is in there and Fairview is in there. But as you, as you look down these salaries, so you'll see you've got the city and then you've got the population and then the salary, the current salary of the city manager. Those salaries, the range of population, first of all, was between 4,000 and 27,000. The 4,000 was an outlier as Wood Village, but we wanted Wood Village in there being your next-door neighbor. But it averages out to 181,000 as the average salary. We also looked at recent recruitments though, because sometimes what we find is if somebody's been in the position for a long time, their salary may not have kept up with the market. And so, we wanted you to see what the ranges were in some of the recent recruitments. So, Fairview advertised at 145 to 175. Sandy advertised at 140 to 180. And Milwaukee, 148 to 201. We looked at all of this, and then we also looked at, what are you looking for in a city manager? And we, we think that it would be advantageous for you to go just a tad higher than some of these others because you want that special person. You want the person that has that kind of experience that, that's going to fill all, as many of those attributes as possible. So, we're, we're suggesting 160 to 200,000 be your range to advertise for. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you for questions. Let us know if that works.
Are you ready to have questions?
No?
I guess not. Tough crowd tonight.
I don't, I don't know whether that shock and awe.
Just to clarify, it looks like Fairview, out of all your selections, had a $10,000 bump after a six-month review. Is that fairly common?
I would, I would say that that happens in a number of cities, yes.
Do you feel like that has contributed to any advantage when it comes to the quality of getting an additional bump with 10, like more tenure sticking around?
Well, we don't advertise that, and that's something that comes out of- And that's something that comes out of the negotiation process with your selected candidate. So that, you'd negotiate that.
Does this salary include, is that all in? Is this an all-in number, so?
Well.
Purse benefits?
No.
Okay, this is just the wage?
Okay.
You realize we're hiring one person?
Yeah.
Ray, I don't want to put you on the spot, if I don't push you on the spot.
You just did, Jesse. Go ahead.
That's what I said, but I understand you. Does this seem appropriate to you?
I didn't prepare for this question, but I would say, if I'm gonna play with Eric's numbers a little bit, I'd say 170 to 210, only because, you know, just here's a general comment. You all work as hard as the Gresham city councils work. And they get each 20-plus thousand a year, okay? They are expected to have some daytime meetings, that's okay. An assistant city manager in Gresham gets about 220, I think. And I think their city manager makes 245. So a lot of comparisons for salary. This is a great list, but as we talk about with all of our staff, we don't compete with the Dals, St. Helens, or Dallas for employees. We compete with Tiger, Beaverton, Happy Valley, because people want to be in the metro area. That's our competition. It doesn't matter how big the city is or small, that's your competition. So I think, yeah, that's all I would say. I'd say 170 to 210 is probably the better range. But who am I to argue with Mr. Jensen? He knows all. So just a little maybe bump up is what I suggest because just knowing what the people at Gresham make and the other cities, even though they're larger than us in the metro area, pay.
So, and that would be great. I mean, we would be happy to move that range up. We'd be less inclined to move the range down, frankly. But moving it up is only going to increase the odds of getting great candidates.
I'd say we're gonna have to pay them that much, but it's all negotiable. So maybe if the range was a little higher, you might attract some candidate that's kind of on the borderline? Would be my thought.
By making it higher?
By having a higher wage, you might attract more people. Someone that was maybe on the borderline applying first, but if the wage is higher, they might apply. We're not locked in to paying them that.
Just so I understand, if we raise the range, we would attract somebody on the borderline at the bottom? Or, I didn't know what you meant. I still don't quite know what you meant.
Maybe a candidate that's more qualified, that's looking for a higher paying wage?
Oh, I agree. No, there's... I think I would be okay with raising the range by 10,000.
Is there a normal probationary period?
That's all part of negotiation.
Okay.
So that could be discussed at that time of negotiation, that the possibility of going up $10,000 at the end of six months is a possibility?
Yeah. So, yeah. So when it comes to the negotiations, you're going to look at the candidate and where they're coming from and their experience. And you can frame it how you want. And there's a number of other factors that come into negotiations, as I'm sure Ed will tell you. All sorts, you know, city car or car allowance, and amount of time off and so forth. There's a number of other factors you can play with.
We have a city manager contract that is basically our framework. And it's probably been 95% the same for each of them. I mean, it's been developed with our employment and labor law council, and we worked through that. And there's the uniquenesses to each city manager, some of what you mentioned there, that they might have particular items that are more of a priority for them than the previous person. And so those end up getting tweaked, and that ends up being part of that negotiation. I walk through that process, and then I bring you back the final contract. So you will see the final contract in a council packet with a resolution. So it's not gonna end up being negotiated in the dark, and you don't know what it is. It's, you'll, you know, you'll see it and approve it. You know, I just, as I was looking at the template, because I wanted to make sure I had it ready at some point. Eric may have candidates who are interested in what the base contract looks like. I wanted to have it. And some of the uniquenesses was raised, were related to, he's a lawyer. And so we had some additional educational, continuing education related to law. We had coverage of bar dues. Well, okay, that wasn't something that we had for Craig Ward, because Craig wasn't an attorney, it wasn't an attribute. Then again, we didn't have relocation expenses for Ray, which we did have for Craig Ward. So that's why I say that the contract is, you know, probably 95, 98% the same. And then there's little massages that get done. Our base contract specifies that there is an annual review. I get to see that the council actually always does an annual review, but, and then that has the opportunity for them to have a merit evaluation change. My volunteer work at a city down the street, those previous two contracts, they both had a six-month mandatory, I shouldn't say mandatory, they had a six-month wage change, assuming that they were successful in the position for those six months. And that was, that's just been sort of the Fairview template approach. That could be something that you want to choose to do. But, you know, that's a few months from now.
But the one thing, going back to the salary range, the one thing I would add is, another advantage of moving your range up, if you decide you want to do that, is in some of the, some of the cities that we work with want to attract someone who might be an assistant city manager in a Hillsborough, or a Gresham, or a Bend, or one of the larger cities, who's ready to move on to being a city manager. But their salaries are so high.
Just on that comment, Steve, Eric, I just pulled it up. The assistant city manager's range in Gresham is 171 to 227. So, anyway, sorry, but just, that's the real number.
To your point, or to the point. So, so moving it up, you may be able to attract some people like that that are, that have been assistant city managers, or department heads even, in much larger cities, but are ready to move into that next position.
Yes.
If I may, excuse me, what percentage of candidates would you say, as far as the finalists go, who end up moving into positions, are from other, like, out of state?
It really depends on the recruitment. It varies quite a bit. We range anywhere from 50% coming from out of state to even as much as 70% coming out of state. But a lot of it has to do with the city that we're working with at the time.
Sure.
And I'll be very frank here, and this does not apply to Troutdale. I want to make this very clear. But if there is a city that has had a reputation for a lot of turmoil, and the local city managers know that, they don't apply. And so we get a lot more out-of-state folks who don't know about those cities. You are not in that category, let me make that clear.
I just know we've had some, like, community developers, if you say that, that are coming from out of state. And if that's the case, I don't know if you, like, have numbers on, like, what the nationwide average is. I mean, that's a big spread, obviously, with huge cities and small towns and stuff. So not necessarily that, but I think it does make sense in terms of the candidate pool. So raise it if that's what we're looking at, competing with, with other cities. Thank you.
You know, our staff is pretty loyal. We don't have a lot of turnover. I think Troutdale allows a certain attraction in itself, just living there. It's less congested, and it's a lot more affordable in a lot of these cities and all this stuff, that sort of thing. It's a place where people come to be depressed, even. Somebody more interested in that than the money, I guess. There are only so many hours in the day that a person, if that's possible, can work anyway, so. I don't think the money is everything.
I would 100% agree to increase. I think what we're trying to do is show our appreciation for what, who we're bringing in, and what kind of commitment we're giving to them. Because we're looking for somebody, I mean, in my view, I've only been around one city manager, but I'm looking for somebody comparable to Ray, who cares about the city, who is invested in the community as a whole and wants the best thing. And to do that, we have to show our appreciation for that person also. And so, you know, a big way you can do that is by paying them well to show your appreciation. Also, we're all looking to keep this person around, so. I think that while this area is great, they don't have to live here in this, in the city. You know, we'd like them to live in our area. But doing these other things, like salary, are pretty important to people, I would imagine, and be important to me. And having a city invested in that person as that person's invested in the city makes a whole lot of sense to me, so. I appreciate the raising of the, I think I would, you know, 170 to 210 seems very appropriate, along with all the other things I think that we would give. So I would be, I would definitely be for that.
Which is interesting, that's CAMUS. I would consider CAMUS a similar-sized job to here. They're 173 to 205.
Well, and I already expressed myself that I favor the adjustment. We're talking about the raise and the range for the same reasons Jeffrey said. And also, I just want to attract the best candidates that are out there. And so I think that it will attract, it would argue that it would tend to attract the best candidates. It's a wider net, more likely candidates to come. Is anybody here opposed to changing the range?
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move the range up then. Okay, 170 to 210.
Okay.
Okay. I would add that I think I'm excited about doing this particular recruitment because I think you have a very attractive city from a number of different standpoints. There's a lot of great potential here. You've had a great city manager onboard, who's leaving the city in good shape. In fact, I will take the opportunity to say that during the interviews, I think I heard so many times about if you could just clone Ray.
Okay, this is hard enough for me anyway, guys. I love you all in the city, but thanks.
But you're in a good position for somebody to come in. And I think between the salary range and between the status of the city foundationally, you're in a good spot. So I'm very excited about it.
We're in a more attractive position rather than a desperate position?
Correct.
Well, it's made you work.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Okay. So I'll be back next week with this, and I expect that it'll be a short item on the council agenda next week, but we'll have it. They'll, the mayor will conduct a public hearing, because part of what we're required to do is have a public hearing on the materials.
Sure.
Presuming it undergoes rather quickly, and you'll prove a resolution to formalize these. And then Eric and his graphic artists are gonna take all of that content, all those words, and put it into the kind of brochure attractive materials that were in that original packet that I brought you, that, you know, as the examples of what they do. So they'll be putting something together like that that would be part of that recruitment process. And then we'll have a kind of a temporary low in this process while the recruitment process is out there. And then things will get busy again for the council in June with the series of meetings. And I have circled around those critical in-person executive sessions that need you to try to make sure you can adjust your schedule to be here. And we'll be moving forward, so.
All right, well, yes. How much overlap time do you normally see with a new city manager dealing with the leading city manager?
We rarely see overlap. And for a lot of cities, it's by design to allow the new person to come in and establish themselves as a manager. But we also see a lot of outgoing city managers who are also resources to the new city manager. So, but normally, we don't see an overlap.
Calendar, and I like that we have some overlap. Especially with someone who's been doing a good job, get them on, you know, hitting the deck running, kind of an aspect of it. I don't have Ray's exact date either.
No, and it is an important issue. Because, and this is, the same thing happens when you have a senior pastor that church leaves. There's this balance between helping the transition and making it work well, but at the same time, wanting everybody to look to the new person, because they're the boss, and not undercutting them. And it's, I'm gonna do whatever you guys want, because I don't have to leave on a certain date. I want to get out of here relatively soon, sometime in August. But also, I understand that problem. And so if you want me to stay in overlap, I'm more than happy to, because I appreciate the issue that I would try to avoid to undercut or create a problem. Because I will just say, it was a different situation when I came onboard, because you had me overlap with the previous city manager, and he was not happy about leaving or me taking his place. So it made it a little more stressful. And I walked on eggshells and kept out of his office for those 30 days, and made it easier. I cannot imagine you'd have a similar experience, whoever you select to replace me. So, anyway, I said as much as I, more than I should, I'm sorry.
Well, the notice period and the transition overlap that I got there on the calendar is, that's the desire. That's what we're shooting for, but, you know, there are factors that can complicate that, so. It isn't guaranteed, but we have a reasonably good shot of being able to accomplish that. So that's what we're working for.
Some, some city managers have in their contracts that they have to give so much notice. And so that, that can sometimes delay. It might be two months in their contract, or I've even seen three months. So just be aware of that.
Yeah, I've only got two weeks of employer notice period plugged into our calendar for them to give notice now. If it's somebody that's between positions, that's quicker. If it's somebody that's leaving a position, it's just like what you're getting at. Now, that was a recent challenge for the folks in Fairview, that they selected somebody that was like, "When's he gonna get here? When's he gonna get here? When's he gonna get here?" Well, he had a two-month notice period that, you know, and you certainly don't want the city manager not to live up to their contract if they're coming to work for you. But, you know, so that overlap period is ideal, but that's one of those circumstances that we'll have to wait and see.
I guess that's my, that would be something I didn't think about. So what, what if... So, what if that is the case, and there's a two-month, you know, they probably don't want to quit their job until they've got this job. You guys work it all out, now they have two months off before they can leave their old job, and Ray wants to be retired on time, so his wife...
Oh, no, you got the keys to the handcuffs, Jeffrey, it's okay.
All right, I already let you loose. I, you know that. But I guess, is there, what happens if...
His wife is gonna have something to say about that, and the grandchild is...
So, do we, is there, what happens if we don't have, like, a city manager for a month or so? Like, what, is there really, how does the city work around that, or?
Typically have an interim city manager. It depends on what the circumstances are. If we're talking about a two-week period, that's one solution. If we're, you know, we had had a couple of city manager cycles ago, somebody leave abruptly, and so, we were starting the 16-week, you know, we hadn't even got that kicked off yet. And so, that was a contract where we brought somebody in to be the city manager for that time.
Just like an interim, like, come in, out of them? Is there somebody on staff now that can, like, fill that role?
Well, let me get a... Unless something happens weird that I can't dispense now, I would never want to leave the city in that situation, have somebody come in for two, or three, or four weeks, or a month, just to fill in for a month. I would, I would stay. I have these weird loyalty bone in me that requires me to make sure it goes well, and I'm concerned about our staff. I don't want our staff to have to do that, kind of jumping up and down.
Okay. If it's longer than that, like, is there someone on staff that can fill that role? Or is it specific to, like, the law, that we have to, like, bring somebody? I just, I'm asking.
No, you know, Eric knew last time, you know, your choices are, somebody on staff steps up, you bring somebody from outside in to do it, or this current city manager stays over.
Okay.
Is that, is there another option, Eric? Is that the three?
Yeah, I mean, that's the case, and again, it goes back to, how long is it gonna be? I mean, there's been times where Ray's been gone to Europe, and so, you know, I'm the acting city manager while he's gone. If we get into a circumstance where, you know, we have that long lead time, Ray's wife and the grandchild are dragging him out, and it's gonna be 10 days before the new person arrives, you're probably going to have me for that brief period. If we go through a recruitment and we have an unfortunate outcome, which we don't want to have happen, but happens on occasion, where you have to restart the recruitment, that's a whole different conversation, and we would have to evaluate at that point.
Okay. I was just curious, I was just curious, I don't know the answer. I think that, too, like, like we talked about earlier with the salary and whatnot, we want to be respectful of the city manager, and if they want to retire, I think we need to be respectful of that and their wishes, and their, you know, awesome work needs to be respected. So, I just want to make sure that we, you know, don't, like, we're not, he's not hanging on. I know, because that he loves the city and whatnot, but that, you know, we don't put him in a position to have to make a decision.
And we may be able, if it gets into a circumstance on that, we may be able to do something on a hybrid basis.
Okay.
Where he needs to be physically somewhere else because of family issues, but we can have him continue in the role.
Okay. There's options, I guess. Perfect.
But, you know, we've got until July to be getting ready for that.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I just can't see Ray just going, "Yeah, I'm out of here, July 31st, I don't care." I just don't see that happening with Ray. I just think that Ray, you know, I think as a wife myself, if I know my husband's retiring, and he has to wait an extra month or two, I have the rest of my life, right? One or two months isn't gonna really matter, and I just don't see that happening. But I do understand, and I appreciate the whole process, in case something does come up, that Ray has to sit down after that.
My wife doesn't want me to retire. She wants me out of the house. I'm kidding. Don't record that.
Noted.
Stricken.
I, well, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn?
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Just say second. You don't have to say this, Zach, I say second.
You'll have Eric back in the knife of justice.
You guys are playing bad ones.
We're just gonna have to go.
Picture five.
He gives them the general rule or something. Well, he doesn't want to, the question's done being asked.